Welcome everybody to this council meeting for July here at Fitzroy Town Hall. Yarra City Council acknowledges Rundri Woi Wurung people as traditional owners and true sovereigns of the land now known as Yarra. We acknowledge their creative spirit, Bunjil, their ancestors and their elders. We acknowledge the strength and resilience of the Rundri Woi Wurung who have never ceded sovereignty and retained their strong connections to family, clan and country despite the impacts of European invasion. We also acknowledge the significant contributions made by other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people to life in Yarra. We pay our respects to elders from all nations here today and to their elders past, present and future. Welcome to Fitzroy Town Hall. One of the decisions of this council has been to interchange, to go back to where we used to do it before Covid, where some council meetings are at Richmond and then we come up here to Fitzroy. That's going to be a great benefit to people who live in Collingwood, Fitzroy, Fitzroy North, Clifton Hill, South Fairfield, Alphington, Carlton North, Princess Hill. And hopefully it'll involve, you know, people from the northern end of the municipality more than has been the case in the time. But none of this would have happened if it hadn't been for the amazing work of the staff here at the Yarra Council, a whole bunch of people, contractors and staff who work for the council directly because it's a hell of a lot of work. I won't go into it just to get this ready. And you will notice we've got a new system where when somebody's talking, you see their face, which I don't know if it's a good thing, but apparently we're bringing it into the 21st century. So welcome everybody. We've got all the councillors here tonight with the exception councillor Crosslands on parental leave for a few more months. And I have got the great honour of welcoming some special guests here tonight from Indonesia. The Melbourne University School of Architecture is hosting several visitors from Indonesia who are in Australia for an inclusive design for walkable place making project. The groups visited the city of Yarra's Gleedel Street Market last month with the group Legs and have spent time in Melbourne and Sydney looking at community open space. Thank you for your attendance here tonight and welcome to the city of Yarra. We'll just ask, I'm just going to ask all the councillors a question in relation to declare a conflict of interest. Please, if you don't have a conflict of interest, please respond, I do. And I'll just go in the order, I've got it here in front of me. Do you declare that you have nominated, you familiarise yourself with the matters being presented to this meeting and that you do not have a conflict of interest? Councillor Aston?
I do.
Councillor Davies?
I do.
Councillor Gomez?
I do.
Councillor Harrison?
I do.
Councillor Ho?
I do.
Councillor Wade?
I do.
Councillor Mackenzie?
I do.
And I do as well. And the CEO apparently for 14.1?
Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest for the item 14.1, which is confidential business, which I'll restate at that time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the confirmation of minutes of the last meeting. I would just like to move a alternative minutes of the last meeting. I'll just, have we got a screen here? We've got, okay, is this one for the public to see? Oh yeah, okay. Right, I'm right behind the eight ball here. So I'll just read it out that it's just minutes of the last meeting to be accepted with the addition in relation to the petition that was tabled towards the end of last month's meeting, that we request the following actions, that the petition said that we do not close Ray Street at Linear Park or implement identical treatments. Sorry, we request the following actions, that we do not close Ray Street at Linear Park or implement identical treatments to Ray Street and Brunswick Street North. We request that if Ray Street is closed, the same be done to Brunswick Street North to improve the visibility and safety of pedestrians, residents and cyclists. So I'll move that alternative recommendation. Is there, councillor Wade is seconding that? I'll just move, I'll just put that, all those in favour of the alternative minutes? That's passed. You've got any against? Yep, okay, so I'll just go through that. In favour councillor Davies, Ho, yeah? Mackenzie, Jolly, Wade, Harrison. And those against, we've got councillor Gomez and councillor Aston. Okay, so that's carried. We've never had a division like that at minutes before. It's all happening now that we've moved to Fitzroy. Moving on, public question time. We've got a few people who have registered and a couple of people who haven't. So I'll just go through them in the order that I've got them here in front of me. So the first person is Herschel Landis, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Herschel Landis, Melbourne Ward, Ratepayer. I refer to the council meeting of April this year and the Elizabeth Street bike lane decision. And in particular, the mayor's response to a question from councillor Wade in regards to departure in his amendment from the officers' risk assessment in their design options in regards buffer dimensions. In his remarks to the public, Mayor Stephen Jolly made reference to the adjusted dimensions of the proposed bike lanes and that he had implied consent approval for the arrangement from the state government and/or the mayor of the city of Melbourne. In the recording, the mayor states, I have discussed it with the state government. I've also, by the way, discussed it with the Lord Mayor of Melbourne last night. In further correspondence to those alleged discussions, the mayor has advised that there were no emails or text messages, that is, no communication, unquote. In response to the Victorian Parliament's Public Accounts and Estimates Committee dated June of this year, the Minister for Public and Active Transport, Honourable Gabrielle Williams, stated the Department of Transport and Planning has advised they do not support the downgrading of important cycling corridors such as the one provided in Elizabeth Street. And further, but will continue to work closely to ensure any new designs meets the relevant standards and requirements. Meanwhile, the city of Melbourne has advertised on its website the planned upgrade of Albert Street, existing infrastructure from Lansdowne Street and Hoddle Street for the financial year 2026/27, with design plans to be confirmed. The intent of upgrading this bike lane that connects with Elizabeth Street would of course have been planned and known at the time of the Yarra meeting. And in my view, known to the city of Melbourne mayor and in my view, advised to councillor Jolly if in fact the alleged conversation had taken place. The questions arise, if the mayor had indeed had those discussions with the state government and the mayor of the city of Melbourne, why did he not relate those relevant informations to the decision-making meeting? Why weren't any relevant conversations referenced back through the offices and into their reports? And why is there no record of the conversations? My conversation, my question tonight however, is what evidence is there that the mayor had those conversations and has the mayor engaged in misleading this council and the community in a decision-making process? Thank you.
I'll answer that question. Thank you for your question. Now, every single day as the mayor of this council, I meet with people at the state level, sometimes at the federal level and definitely my colleagues at the council last month, last week, last fortnight, for example, we were in Canberra, where we met with mayors and councillors from all over Australia. Me and the Lord Mayor of the city of Melbourne are very close friends. And just because I didn't provide you through an FOI with a text message or an email doesn't mean that exhausts all possibilities of how I discuss with the Lord Mayor of the city of Melbourne. I've discussed with the Lord Mayor of the city of Melbourne about the Elizabeth Street bike lane. I've discussed with elements of the state government on the same issue. And if you don't believe me, I would make one suggestion. Ring up the Lord Mayor, I'll give you his phone number, you're an ex-councillor, so I trust you. I know you won't just put it on social media. Ring him up and ask him, have you ever discussed this matter? I can tell you where we met, I can tell you about the conversation because we are very, very proud of the decision that we've made in relation to Elizabeth Street. And it'll be codified at next month's council meeting. We are bringing Elizabeth Street back to the people of North Richmond, to the Vietnamese community, to the businesses, to the temple, something that the last council didn't do. And we are very, very proud. We are not taking a backward step on this. And if you want to check with the city of Melbourne, go and check, I can give you the number. So thank you for your question. And the next person is Sean Mulcahy. Are you here, Sean? No? The next person is Shane Delphine from Wycombe, welcome Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you councillors. Today I'm actually here on my own behalf, speaking as a resident of Fitzroy. I want to begin actually by thanking you, Mayor, and thanking all councillors and officers indeed for re-establishing council meetings at Fitzroy Town Hall. Hopefully it will contribute to an even greater flourishing of democracy in the city of Yarra. So thank you, thank you all for that. My question relates tonight to the state government's recent announcement of a trial of Victoria's first pill testing centre, which will be conducted at 95 Brunswick Street and which will commence operation later this month. At the outset, I want to state that I'm supportive of pill testing. I'll make a few brief observations and then ask my question. The proposed pill testing site is in an area of socio-economic disadvantage. It is possible and perhaps likely that drug dealing in the area surrounding the site will increase as a consequence of the trial. This has the potential to exacerbate the existing disadvantage and this strikes me as somewhat unconscionable. Further, it seems likely that in a myriad of ways, council and thus Yarra ratepayers will bear additional costs as a consequence of the trial. Thus to my question, can officers or perhaps you, Mayor, please provide details of any consultations that council has had with the state government in order to provide reassurance to Yarra residents that they will not be unduly burdened by this trial?
Thank you Shane. Kerry McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for your question Shane. The answer is that council was advised of the establishment of the service by the Department of Health on the same day that it was announced more widely to the public. Almost immediately after receiving the advice, our CEO and senior staff met with senior representatives from the Department of Health. And officers are participating in an implementation working group that's been led by the Department of Health as well. We have through that working group and indeed at the meeting that we were at, have and will continue to raise the specific risks which you have just so clearly defined, including the proximity to Connie Ben Early Years Centre, the Fitzroy Youth Hub, public housing and existing public congregation locations that we are aware of in this location. Further, our request to have the working group's terms of reference amended, have that they have been accepted. And the terms of reference now include critical issues such as identifying and addressing precinct level, public safety and amenity impacts.
Fantastic, thank you. Shane, I'll just add to that as ward councillor for Fitzroy because as you know, it's in Brunswick Street or it's on Brunswick Street. I was told the night before and so the consultation wasn't great. Let's just call a spade a spade. And I think they probably were nervous that we might just like attack the idea. Speaking for myself, and I'm not speaking on behalf of any other councillor here, but as the ward councillor, it's in my ward, I have to say there's overwhelming support I'm finding from people in Fitzroy for the pills testing centre, but especially amongst young people. I myself was very involved. We had, you know, events at the Gasso and to try and push for pill testing. About 500 young Australians have died since the turn of the century because of dodgy pills, mainly in their twenties and often at festivals. Often when they see the police, they'll take more than they should because they get nervous and somebody will die. It's really horrific. It's a very different demographic and that's not saying it's better or worse, but it's a different demographic than those who are like chaotic drug users taking heroin and ice down in North Richmond. They're often people who are, you know, very stable, university students, young workers, whatever, who buy pills to go to a festival. And just the same way as my two kids are in their twenties, I'm glad that if they ever did smoke, and God forbid they did, or if they do drink, I know that because of the control of liquor and tobacco, that they're not going to get poisoned. I think it's good that the state government are moving to pill test. In fact, I think there should be more of them, especially at festivals. But FYI, just, you know, in Fitzroy, it's quite a popular decision. But thank you Shane. The next person we've got is Elizabeth Clark.
Elizabeth Clark, or Honey, founding member of Legs, let's enhance Gleedel Street advocating for active transport in community parks. By the by, we've had Fogo for a year now and our household says it's great. Thank you, Yarra Council. Now, Yarra's developer fund has $30 million. The Charlotte Street Library Park was designed, budgeted for and passed by the last council to benefit all users of Richmond Library. It was scrapped by the new council under pressure from comfortable Elm Grove residents. The mayor said new parks were needed in Cremona and were under negotiation to be announced in September. They've been under negotiation for quite a while, I believe. Then councillor Davies said a new park at the front of the library would be wrecked by the library's redevelopment. In Yarra's 2526 budget, $100,000 has been allocated for planning for the Richmond Library redevelopment. I quote, minor, this is directly from the budget, the money is for minor renewal works at Richmond Library, including minor fit-out, renewal of wall and floor coverings, equipment replacement, furniture renewal and bathroom renewal. The existing library will look fresh and leaks will be fixed, but this is a far cry from the dream construction of a new library. Besides a beautiful re-imagined library would take years of planning and funding and Yarra doesn't have the money. Why not make the Charlotte Street Library Park part of the library's minor renewal works? Council has shown it's prepared to admit mistakes and is willing to experiment, which is good. That park would add to a feeling of change and renewal. Get the trees growing, trees take ages to grow. So while negotiations for the Cremona Park or Parks continue, why not get cracking on the library park?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Brett? Then I'll call in councillor Davies. Brett Gamble?
Thank you for your question, Elizabeth. At the 26th of November 2024 council meeting, council determined not to proceed with the delivery of the Charlotte Street Park. And in relation to the open space, officers continue to explore land acquisition opportunities in Cremona to expand public open space and are actively progressing our options in this area. Once the process reaches an advanced stage, proper inclusive community engagement will take place.
Councillor Davies, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for your question, Elizabeth. The renewals that you're referring to are for current renewals on the current existing site. So for people to enjoy and continue to enjoy the current library as it stands today. There's also an additional budget in the 25, there's also an additional allocation in the 2526 annual budget for the first stage of the physical renovation of the library, which is $200,000. So that's additional and separate to the renewals that you have just raised. So you're correct with the renewals, but then there's also the beginning of re-imagining the library, which we'll share with you as we take that idea forward and hope to be able to share the first stage steps with you very soon. So I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Right, thank you.
I'll just add, Elizabeth Clark said that the council, and she made the compliment that the council is being shown to admit when it makes mistakes. The fact is, we have made no mistakes so far. This is the best council in the history of Australia. It's definitely the best council in the history of Yarra. And one thing we definitely haven't made a mistake on is Richmond Library. We've put some serious money into it in this budget. We've got three more beautiful budgets to go. And by the end of this, this term, we are going to have a massively revamped Richmond Library, thanks to the leadership shown in that ward by councillor Davies, we're backed in, I think, by all the councillors. And most importantly, next year, next year is the state election year. And this is where we're going to come after Spring Street and say, you've done some very bad things to us, but here's your opportunity for redemption. We believe in redemption. And we say to Jacinta, our good friend Jacinta, your chance of redemption, Premier Allen, is to put money into the Richmond Library project. And that's what we'll be doing, watch this space over the next 16 months. But thank you, Ms Clark. The next person is Joe Agalino. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. This is a great reminder of what the Richmond Town Hall used to be like prior to the renovations. I've been approached by many neighbours around Rowena Parade who are struggling to park on events days and nights. Despite being informed by staff in committing to review parking sensors, no time limit was given to this commitment. Unfortunately, this football season has seen increases in parking illegally, including no-stopping zones around the whole MCG precinct. Parking officers are doing a fantastic job and doing their best and can easily book on no-parking without permit areas. However, there are many sensors not working in the one-hour parking zone which is allowed and parking officers do not have time to mark tyres and return an hour later when sensors are not working. Yarra is thus continuing to miss out on tens of thousands of dollars. I know from the 1st of July, work was to start on the bigger parking issue on the major shopping strips, of which I am strongly supportive. However, there are so many sensors not working, which cost around $1,000 each to install, I believe the two issues could be done concurrently, the shopping strips and the parking sensors in all the residential areas. I request a timeframe and time limit, preferably before the finals season, to the sensor review works. Council really does need the money. Could you please provide specific timeframes for the sensor work to be done?
Thanks, Jo. Jane Osmond, please. Mary Osmond?
Thanks, Jo. Thanks for your question. I am aware that you've had various conversations with council officers regarding parking in and around the MCG precinct, including an onsite meeting. And I understand that council officers undertook to continue proactive patrols in the area and review parking sensors. So I appreciate you acknowledging the work that the team are doing. Since then, council's contractors have been reviewing and replacing sensors and to date we've replaced close to 200. The contractors are continuing to work on this and anticipate that all priority streets around that precinct will be completed before the final season. So thank you.
Thanks, Jo. Matthew Chrisfield? Councillor Davies?
Yeah, just to put your mind a little bit at ease, Jo. And just to bring to the awareness of the group here tonight and everybody watching, we do have a curbside review in play currently. We've allocated to the current annual budget $100,000 for that curbside review. That is actually due to the great work of yourself, Jo, and some of the locals down in Rowena and in Cremona who have raised the core issues that we're addressing, which are simplifying our parking signage, looking at how we enforce and reorientate our parking zones for residents, looking at better enforcement models, looking at a more equitable model with short-stay parking, multi-passers and those sorts of strategies and solutions. So just to know, we are on it. We're bringing that promise in the form of a strategy, a curbside strategy. Thanks.
Thank you. Matthew, are you here, Matthew Chrisfield? Okay. Jane Keach? Welcome, Jane. Just press the button when you get to the front. Thank you.
My question is about how I can save my hedge. It seems a little bit trivial in some ways, but it's important to me. I'm a recent owner of a building in Fenwick Street in North Carlton on the corner of Sutton Street. It's an art modern building made from handmade bricks in 1938 and it's got a cypress hedge out the front, which is, was planted by the previous owner and maintained by him since 1988. I've got a council compliance order, a second one, to cut it back to the fence line. That would be about 18 inches and that would destroy the hedge because it's a cypress hedge, it's got six inches, eight inches of green and then dead wood inside. So I'm trying to find a way of cutting it back to the maximum amount, but maintaining the integrity of the hedge without having to take it out, basically. It's a very beautiful hedge and it's one of the few remaining aesthetically beautiful hedges in North Carlton. So that's why I'm here tonight to ask the question, can I find a way of saving my hedge?
Thank you, Jane. The CEO's got to respond to your question right now.
Hi, Jane. Thanks for the question. The hedge sounds beautiful, so does the home, actually, sounds lovely. We, I can't answer the question right now because I don't know the specifics, but I'm pretty sure that we'll be able to find a way to work with you to balance both, even if we take a sort of progressive approach. The reason why the teams require overhanging greenery into the footpath space to be managed is because it creates hazards for people using the footpaths. So we have to balance those objectives. But what I'll do is I'll get my general manager to reach out to you tomorrow, Mary Osmond, she'll give you a wave. And she'll talk through the details and get someone to go down and talk it through with you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks for your help.
Thanks, Jane. I've just sent the email with all the details to all the councillors and the execs, so they'll have all that information. Are there any other members of the audience that want to ask a question? Public question, okay, thank you. We'll move on to the council business reports, starting with 7.1, the request for public exhibition of the municipal public health and wellbeing plan 2025 to 2029. We have one registration to speak. Elizabeth Clark, welcome.
The public health and wellbeing plan is a mighty impressive snapshot. And the 10 fact sheets showing the key priorities for the council show that these issues are interwoven and absolutely highlight the importance of local government. An intelligent, imaginative and flexible local government responding to the needs of the local community. So it prompts two motherhood statements. One is, humans were engineered to move. We're hard-wired to move, our bodies are designed to move. We need to move to think clearly and feel good. We're not hunting and gathering and surviving thanks to physical activity anymore. We're sitting at a computer or on a couch watching TV, sitting in a car, the kid strapped in the backseat. If we're not active, can we be healthy? We are social beings, this is the second motherhood statement, and we need to feel connected, to walk and chat. We need council to create the shared spaces to give up room to move, to give us room to move. Yarra is slated to house 44,000 new residents. Last night at the Richmond Forum, Dr Jane Homewood said state government counted the number of new homes needed, then divided it by the number of train stations, something like that. And we're expected to absorb 44,000 new residents. And the question is, where? Reports are one thing, and now for the action. In Yarra's budget 2526, we have greening our streets and public spaces, including expanding the tree canopy, enhance safety in our streets and public spaces, deliver programmes to foster connection, advocate for external stakeholders to support at-risk communities in Yarra, support families in accessing early years services and programmes in their neighbourhood and maintain and develop our cycling network. Council has a responsibility for pocket parks. Streetspeople love paths, trees, parks, and a park outside the Richmond Library, I'll continue to say, is a perfect place for this. In three years, we'll be reviewing the Bridge Road Streetscape Master Plan, drawn up in 2017. And it will be 10 years later since that plan was presented. And we'll be asking ourselves, what has changed?
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Just, just one thing, just, it actually reinforces your point. It's not 44,000 new people in Yarra, it's 44,000 new dwellings. So it'll probably be up to 80,000 new people, but that was an excellent submission. Thank you so much. Officers, councillors, I'm going to take the report as read. We've got Sarah Ernst and Malcolm McCall here if there are any questions or... So we've got one question straight away from councillor Gomez. And then councillor Wade. Councillor Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor. Great report. I must admit, the separating the report into its own document, so it's being summarised into the council plan has been a winner, I think. It's much more depth and much more detail. I have two questions. It's more to expand on the, on the, on the work. On page 30 of the agenda, could you please elaborate on the issue of Yarra having more children who are developmentally vulnerable than the Victorian average in the specific domains of physical health and wellbeing, something that Elizabeth Clark mentioned, and emotional maturity? Would you just expand on that? And the second item, if you want to, now, is just the issue of food insecurity and the role that our neighbourhood houses play in that.
Thank you councillor Gomez. I personally, myself, received results just very recently from the Australian Early Childhood Census that is done by the Australian Institute of Family Studies, presented by a colleague who looks after the family and children services. And no-
And no doubt, there's some tracking backwards. It's not, it's not great. And I think the priority in the health plan, and it's emerging through our other areas as well, in our frontline service delivery across family and children's services, is that we need to double down on our efforts towards families and, and, and small children. And I might ask, um, Ms McGrath to, um, provide further context.
Um, I think what, really just building on what Malcolm, um, has described, which I think the report talks about, um, Yarra is, um, made up of many communities. And we can see where some of these vulnerabilities are throughout the city. Um, primarily around, um, you know, large public housing estates, those sorts of communities. So it's not universally the case. And so we're really keen to look at that targeted action, particularly where we have services and programmes and partnerships within, in those locations. How together can we join up to have the biggest impact?
Councillor Wade?
And there was a second question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
The second part of the question again, councillor Gomez, was regarding...
It was the issue of food insecurity in the community and how the neighbourhood houses help us with that.
Yes. So we'll, uh, I can report, I can report that the council has provided a multi-year fun, funding towards the neighbourhood houses sector. This council resolved that earlier in the year. There's an increase of funding that was fixed at least 3.5% per annum. So Yarra nearly contributes as much as the Victorian Government towards its nine neighbourhood houses. The nine neighbourhood houses do a raft of activities, that's whether that's providing access to pantry items and other food items that people can get, um, for nothing, so that they can improve, improve their food security. They also do meals. They also do sit-down meals in the people, where people get to socialise in the benefits. So I think Yarra is very fortunate that it's got its network of nine neighbourhood houses all across the city. The other activity that we've been doing for a number of years since the COVID pandemic, and we continue to do now, is that the Yarra City Council organises the secretariat around ensuring that the whole food system network gets to meet on a quarterly basis and see emerging trends and work out where the res, where resources are going. So I think in this health plan we've indicated in year one, one of our actions is going to be around doubling down on terms of our, making sure that the information is accessible to the community. Another big thing is ensuring that in getting relief, people don't feel any, feel, feel like they're being stigmatised. So that it's very, we have, for example, out of, um, our Begunian Onion Library up in North Fitzroy, there's a community pantry. No one's knowing what you're going there for, you just grab it, go. And I think that's the thing, it's culturally appropriate food, no stigmatisation, because unfortunately, we're entering a world where, you know, from people who are living, having to live on limited incomes, also to people who are working, who just are getting, are getting smashed as well. So we're very, very mindful of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wade?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a very niche question, which I'm very happy for you to take on notice. Um, I noticed in the, the background section that we talk about the air quality uh, monitor thing in Fairfield, rather than referring to the one in East Melbourne, um, which, you know, there's not many of them in this area, and it's kind of noted in the report that the Fairfield one is in one of our kind of leafier, greener areas and possibly isn't as applicable as it could be. Um, and I was just thinking, because so many of our suburbs, Fitzroy, Collingwood, um, Richmond at the very least, are closer to the East Melbourne one, if that's something that we have regard to.
I'm, I'm very aware of the one in Fairfield, it's right on top of the train station there. So I think it's a good point. You are correct in saying that that is a less densely populated, less commercial area and less traffic on the whole. I think it's worth us considering whether a better benchmark is East Melbourne, and I think I can confidently say, let's, we'll follow up and work out, um, how we can benchmark better and whether the data from East Melbourne will be more applicable and get professional expert advice on the matter, because air quality is a major contributor to good health and good lung health in particular. Thank you.
Um, okay, councillors, I'm looking for a way forward here. Uh, councillor Harrison, councillor Mackenzie, Deputy Mayor Mackenzie seconding. You want to move the motion? Is that correct? And you, you're willing to second Deputy Mayor? Yeah. Uh, councillor Harrison, uh, would you like to move the motion?
Okay, so I'll move the officer's, um, recommendation, please. Um, okay, so look, um, I just want to, um, just, um, support what, uh, councillor Gomez has said. Um, it actually took me quite some time to read that report. It's incredible how much work the officers had actually put into the work. There's a huge amount of research that's gone into there. So I really want to commend the work that the office has done. It's really valuable. It gives us a benchmark to work from. There's obviously a lot of work that needs to be done, but you've given us a really firm basis to move forward and, and try and, you know, be on top of all of the public health and wellbeing issues that we've got in the municipality. So I really just wanted to thank the officers for that work and, um, move the, move the, um, move it on to consultation, um, with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Mackenzie, seconding?
Thank you, and thank you for moving that motion. Um, and I will just echo, um, uh, thanks. I really support the release of this draft, um, Municipal Public Health and Wellbeing Plan for Public Exhibition. It's a strong piece of work, and I'm looking forward to the feedback. I'm particularly pleased to have an item in it, um, for the development of Yarra's First Loneliness Action Plan. This is something that I campaigned on, um, and it's because loneliness is not just confined to the private realm. It's a serious public health, social and economic issue, and it impacts us all as a community. Um, reading the report, we see that one in five people in Yarra report feeling lonely, and that rises for people uh, living with disabilities or people on lower incomes. Um, that's not just a statistic, that's thousands of our neighbours who feel invisible or unsupported or left out of community life. Um, and it's part of a wider trend. We are seeing national research that shows us that young Australians are now the loneliness age group, surpassing older people. Um, not that it is a competition, uh, but rates, rates of psychological distress among 15 to 24-year-olds have more than doubled in the last decade. Um, and the data tells us something that I think that a lot of us already know to be true, that in a world that is becoming increasingly connected, people are feeling more and more alone. Um, and of course, there's economic costs to this. Uh, it's estimated that across Australia, it's costing $2.7 billion to the Australian economy, and it will be having impacts on smaller local council areas as well. It's associated with lower workforce participation, higher health costs and a greater demand for crisis services. Um, over the past few months, colleagues have been visiting high schools in Yarra, and I asked this question. What do you want the city to look like in, uh, in the future? And I remember this one student said something to me that has really stuck with me. Um, they said, I want people to know their neighbours' names. Um, and, and why that is important, I think, is because as Yarra grows and our space gets tighter, uh, we need to work even harder to build that understanding and compassion and community connection, um, so that those tensions don't boil over, um, uh, which they often can when, when we go through periods of urban growth. Um, as I said, it's not just loneliness, it's not just an individual problem. Um, it affects us all, um, but there is something that we can do about it, and this part of the plan is a step towards acknowledging that and acting on it. Um, it is just one part of a really detailed plan. I'm really looking forward, um, to hearing what the Yarra community has to say about it. And I would encourage you to give feedback, people in this room, um, and friends, um, and family, uh, so that we can make the best plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else want to speak on this? Councillor Gomez?
So again, I want, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to reiterate the great work that the team has done. I think sometimes when we work in council, we forget, you know, we get caught up in planning issues, we get caught up in budgets, we get caught up in all kinds of issues, and we forget that council deserves its people, to serve the community. And when we do things like the Health and Wellbeing Plan, it's a fantastic reminder that we're here to help. So I thank the officers, it's a great reminder, at the end of a, of a long seven months of budgets and council plans, that we, we are supposed to, and we do care for the people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desperately want to speak to this item? Um, would you like to exercise your right of reply, councillor Harrison? No? Okay, I'll put that to the floor. All those in favour? That is passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to 7.2 ISP Draft Community Infrastructure Plan. There are no registrations to speak. Um, take the report as read. Are there any questions to the officers, Kate Youngkin or Mary Osman? I'm not sure. Are there any questions? No, there's not. Would anyone like to move the officer recommendation? Nobody? Nobody wants to? Councillor Aston? Councillor seconded, councillor Gomez. Councillor Aston, you have three minutes, if you'd like to speak to it, that is. Starts now.
I will speak to it really quickly. Um, thank you to the officers for putting this report, uh, together and for putting the, uh, the infrastructure plan, uh, draft together for community consultation. Um, infrastructure is a really, really, really important part of how we cater for our growing city, how we provide places and spaces for all of the services that we need to provide, as well as places where people can gather for their, you know, community health, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, while this is just the draft, I strongly encourage the community, even though it already has had community input, to go back, have a look at it again, get back involved with it and provide your input, because this is something that is going to guide our decision-making over the next four years and beyond, to make sure that we are capable of supporting this growing city. So please do go get involved, have a look, provide your feedback.
Thank you. Councillor Gomez, seconding?
Yes, I, thank you, Mayor. I, um, agree with everything that councillor Aston has said. The Community Infrastructure Plan is a very important document that the community can tell us what their preferences are for how we utilise your money to build this city. It's, it's a core part of our council plan to build this city. And so understanding from you what, what you want, what you want from this city, but, but for now and for the future, um, is very important, and this is one way of doing it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Councillor Harrison, then councillor Wade?
Um, just really briefly, this is a really important, um, piece of work. We have heard tonight, we've got 44,000 additional units, probably doubling our population, um, in the coming years. Um, so having that infrastructure is really important, and we need to fund that somehow. And this is a really important piece of groundwork, um, so that we can actually work out what we need and how we're going to fund it and, and to justify, you know, what we, what we do with the, the revenue that we can raise, but also seeking to get revenue from other sources to fund these really important, um, infrastructure needs.
Thank you. Councillor Wade?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to staff. I know this has been underway for a, um, long, long time. Um, I've been asking to see it for a long time, and I'm very excited to get a chance to read it. It's very clear that a lot of, um, thought has gone into it. Um, I would definitely recommend anybody listening at home to, to have a read and let us know what you think. There are some quite detailed suburb profiles and, and things that I think you'll find interesting about your own neighbourhood as well, and what's, what's in the pipeline and what we need. So really looking forward to hearing what community members have to say on this one.
Thank you, councillor Wade. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, would you like to exercise your right of reply, councillor Harrison? Uh, sorry. Aston, sorry. No. Um, okay, I'm going to put that, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That's passed unanimously. We move on to 7.3 ISP Draft Asset Plan. Again, there are no registrations to speak from residents. Um, do we have any questions to officers? Uh, councillor Gomez? When the officers are in position, if you can just do your thing. Thank you, Ashley and Brett. Uh, the question is coming now.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, page 234 of the agenda talks about the ERP system and how it might aid in the, um, decision-making around assets. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor. Um, the ERP system helps council bring all the information across all of its different softwares into one centralised location where we can use information from different ways, in terms of our financials, the requests we're receiving from customers, um, in a more efficient way to make decisions about our assets and provide you, the decision-makers, with the information you need to make those decisions well.
I've got two more questions, far away.
So two more related questions. Um, the, page 239. Uh, bit confused by the description of the stormwater drainage assets we have. It sort of says it's 80% good or better on the graph on page 239. The question, two questions said. How, does that measure, um, or assess the fit for purpose of the stormwater drains, in particular flow rates and blockages? And then it's confusing, but on page 243 of the agenda, it says that the, the asset data status, how much we know about the stormwater drains, is only medium compared to the other assets. So just, it's, I'm not worried about it, it's just a little bit of a conflict in my mind to what we're saying about our stormwater network.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, the council has quite an extensive network of drainage pipes. Uh, the graphs that are presented there particularly relate to the condition of pipes, primarily their structural condition. Council undertakes a number of activities to ensure that the pipes are clear and, um, can drain water. Um, so this is more focused on the long-term condition of those pipes. Um, and a drainage pipe may last over 120 years. In fact, we have some that are over 120 years. Um, so it's important to keep in context the, the, the assets we're talking about are extremely long-lived assets. In terms of the, um, completeness of our asset condition data on drainage, um, we, that's been identified as being, um, a medium level of maturity. Um, because we have such an extensive network of drainage assets, it can be challenging to end the challenges of accessing underground networks, it can be challenging to get a complete condition of our drainage network. However, we have prioritised, um, capturing the condition on the assets that present the greatest risk to council. Um, and we continue to regularly inspect through rolling programmes the condition of our drainage assets to ensure that the risk to council is managed.
Another question from councillor Gomez.
Just one small one. Uh, page 240. Um, can you explain what is the opportunity for integrating open space in roadsides? I'm just unclear what that means.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Um, the council, as we've discussed, uh, even earlier in this evening, um, council has quite restricted and we're quite developed area. So we need to look at opportunities for integrating, um, those opportunities for building community within our roadside areas, whether we, and how we can um, integrate the greenery into the everyday of our streetscapes.
Um, thank you. Any other questions? I hope our listeners from Indonesia are staying awake. Um, we're trying to keep it as exciting as possible for you here tonight. Um, Draft Asset Management Plan, it's always an exciting discussion topic here, city of Yarra. Um, any other questions? No. Um, I'm looking for a way forward, councillors. 7.3 Draft Asset Management. Would anyone like to, yes, councillor Gomez wants to move. Councillor Harrison will second. Uh, councillor Gomez, um, your three minutes starts now.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, nothing to say other than I endorse and support the officers' work. Managing the assets of the community, uh, is an important task. Understanding the, the quality and condition of them and putting a picture on what we need to invest in for the future is very important. So I commend the officers for their work and I endorse the officers' recognition.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Harrison, nothing to add. Um, anyone like to speak to this, on this ma, on this motion? No? Um, I'll put it to the floor. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That is passed unanimously. We'll move on to 7.4 LGBTI QA Plus Memorial Commission. Um, we've got no registrations to speak. Are there any questions to the officers? Um, I'm more than happy to move the officer recommendation. Councillor Wade is going to second it. Um, the, um, maybe two years ago, um, members of the LGBTI um, QA Plus community, for those of you who don't know, especially any of you who are visitors to the city of Yarra, um, this area is now, it's got like five times the same as, the, the five times the state, state average of same-sex marriages. It's the, sort of the centre of the, um, of the nightclub scene for the, for, for the queer community. Um, and we're super, super proud of that. I think the last council had a majority of councillors who identified as queer, if I'm not mistaken, councillor Wade. Yeah, or, or 50/50 anyway. Um, we didn't actually do a survey, but like, that was what they said. Um, and, um, uh, what, what, what's, what, what, what we were told, what the mayor at the time, councillor Crossland was told, what I was told, what others were told, was that lots of kids, especially from regional Victoria, um, who came into the city, um, often because they were rejected, um, or faced issues in their community, um, in their families and so on, came into this area, um, for solace because of the... in their families and so on, came into this area for solace because of the, you know, because of the scene. And often it was much, much harder for those people than they thought it was going to be. And we've had unfortunately a spate of suicides of young kids, often many of them working in the clubs and bars, you know, literally within 500 metres of this building here tonight. And they asked us, because often those kids, it's only the community that they find here is actually their family, it's not their family back home, it's this is their family. And what they wanted to do is when that person dies, their family would never turn up to the funeral, it would be just their mates, their friends in this area, and they wanted some type of memorial that they could just acknowledge those poor kids who took their own lives because of the situation that they faced. And, you know, I'm just so proud of what the last council and this council, and I've got to acknowledge councillor Crossland's leadership role in this, the last year's mayor, we've carried on from that, and we've put a significant amount of money, and next to Collingwood Town Hall, we're going to put up, and I have to say, like what I'd know about art, you can put into a matchbox, but this memorial is, it's called the Flower Pavilion, it is sort of like shifting coloured light, it is absolutely stunning. Not only for this issue, but just as a work of art, it's stunning. It's an inspiration that sort of comes to the lighting, from the nightclub lighting, from stained glass windows, and it really is something absolutely special. And when it's put up, I'd encourage all of you to go down and have a look at it, and it's an officer, we hope, as a council, that the family and friends of those who died of suicide will find some comfort in this space and will honour the memory of those that we've lost. Councillor Wade.
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with everything you just said. The Municipal Health and Wellbeing Plan tonight was quite useful because it informed me that we have 24.3% of our population identifies as members of the LGBTIQ A+ community, that's an incredible percentage really, and it's really useful to have that to hand tonight. So thank you to the team for that. I completely agree with everything the mayor just said. This is an important space for the LGBTIQ A+ community, the Yarra community has been home to a lot of people, but it's also people who don't live here come here for solace, for companionship, for friendship, for family. I wanted to thank the community members who have brought this to us, as the mayor did. I want to thank councillor Crossland for his work on this so far, and the Community Reference Group as well, who obviously have done quite a lot of work. There's been a lot of, there were a lot of applications, a lot of different designs to sort through, and I completely agree that the one they've landed on is beautiful. So I'm looking forward to the next steps, and thank you to everybody who's been involved thus far.
Thank you councillor Wade. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Mackenzie?
Thanks, and I will echo that, it is a stunning design, and I can't wait for it to come up. This memorial was particularly important for a couple of reasons, but firstly that it came to us through a community member, that there are pathways for ideas to come to Yarra, and I want to encourage other people to look to that. This memorial will be acknowledging the harm that LGBTIQ A+ people have faced and still face in all of our communities. It exists in public and private life, and in the systems that we navigate and the streets that we walk in. As councillor Wade said, in Yarra, we have a really large population that identifies as LGBTIQ A+, too many of them feel unsafe. The last national study of mental health and wellbeing found that almost half of our LGBTIQ A+ people had seriously thought about taking their own life at some point, that is significantly higher compared to the rest of the population. Yarra is a really inclusive city, it's why people love being here, but despite that, we know that people are still being told directly or indirectly that they don't belong. And sadly, that message is growing louder, we are seeing really disturbing rises in political and cultural attacks against people for being nothing more than who they are. And there's absolutely a movement trying to push people back into the shadows. Progress, I remind myself regularly, is not guaranteed, we can't just sit and forget, we have to keep on building spaces and honouring the past so that we can shape a safer and more inclusive future. I'm really pleased to be on a council that is moving forward on this. I am new and had very little to do with it, but it's part of the reason why I wanted to be a councillor in Yarra, because the people who live here are compassionate and caring, and that is reflected in the actions of advisory bodies and councillors who have championed this. So thank you, everybody who had a hand in this, and I'm really looking forward to it opening up or being made.
Thank you. Anyone else, councillor Davies?
I'm just going to add a little bit, because I, just to follow on from the mayor and councillor Wade, they've said just about everything that I also agree with in full. I just want to share a little bit of a personal thing, in the sense that I've had a lot of friends from the LGBTIQ A+ community over the years, and I have experienced much of what the mayor's mentioned with my friends who have not spent Christmas with their families because their families don't want them to spend it with them. It was an eye-opener when I was a young man, and I will always continue to be an ally of this community. I think this memorial is an amazing step forward, I look forward to seeing it, I can't The LGBTIQ A+ community does belong, and as an employer, I've always championed this, not only just with female equality in my workforce quotas, but also in the training of leadership of people and individuals from the LGBTIQ A+ community. I think it's an important and integral way to ensure that our friends, our fellow members of our community are recognised, but also given the opportunity to be leaders, leaders in our community. I think this is a great memorial for the people that are lost to the tragedy of suicide for not being accepted, and I just think it's a great memorial, and I'm very proud to stand with everybody in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll put that motion, I'll not exercise my right of reply, we'll put that motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand, that's passed unanimously. We'll move on to 7.5 City of Yarra Collection Policy Renewal, no registrations to speak, we'll take the report as read. Are there any questions to officers? No. Can we please get a councillor to move? Thank you to our friends from Indonesia, I hope you enjoyed the meeting and good luck with the rest of your tour. Councillor, Deputy Mayor Mackenzie will move. The officer recommendation, is there somebody would like to second? Councillor Gomez, councillor Mackenzie, three minutes.
Thank you. So I'm on the Arts Advisory Committee and have been since I joined this council just over seven months ago. I really want to thank officers and the members of that committee for the work on this updated collection policy. I'm really pleased that we'll be voting on putting it out for public exhibition and would encourage members of the public to give us feedback on it. It lays out a, so this draft plan lays out a pretty strong and thoughtful framework for how we care for and develop and share our civic art and heritage collection. This is a collection that tells our story, where we've come from and what we value as a community to the best of its ability. I also want to emphasise how important it is that we continue in Yarra to find more ways to show people this collection. It belongs to the people of Yarra and should be as visible and accessible and engaged with as much as we can. I also wanted, as I was reading this, I wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge that art in Yarra has at times been provocative, and I think that's a really good thing. We've seen work spark debates, it's generated headlines, and it's pushed people to think in different ways. So much of my own politics and my own values and understanding of the world has been shaped by art that shocked me, art that I absolutely hated, that made me laugh, that made me cry and challenged me. It doesn't just reflect our society, it provokes it and it strengthens it, and sometimes it even heals it. I was reminded of a quote that the tall man, Goth Whitlam, once said, which was that "A society in which the arts flourish is a society in which every human value can flourish. A society where democracy is secure is a society where the arts is secure." This is one part of the work that Yarra City Council does in the arts, but I just want to thank everybody for their work on this policy, I encourage the community to contribute, and I hope that my colleagues will support us in putting this out to consultation.
Councillor Gomez?
I'll be very quick, I agree with councillor, sorry councillor Mackenzie. The only thing I would add to it is that it's important that we understand the rules by which we manage our collection, and I think, given that some, a lot of art is provocative, that we just need, we need everyone in the community to understand, you know, how we manage that collection, how we display it, how we add to it, and how we potentially remove items for other reasons. Endorse this motion to my fellow councillors.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll put that to the floor, all those in favour, please raise your hand, that has passed unanimously. We'll move on to 7.6 Procurement Australian for Library Services, no registrations to speak. Are there any questions to officers? No, there's not, I'm looking for a way forward. Would anyone like to move, councillor Harrison? Secondary, councillor Davies. Councillor Harrison, you have three minutes to move this.
Sorry, I'm not going to say anything much to this, thanks to the officers that have done the work to pull this report together, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you, councillor Davies.
Thanks again to the officers, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? No, I'll put to the floor, all those in favour, please raise your hand, that has passed unanimously. We'll move on to 7.7 Governance Report, July 2025, no registrations to speak. Are there any questions to Patrick O'Gorman and Phil Delosse from councillors? No, there's not. Okay, would anyone like to move this officer recommendation? Councillor Gomez, would anyone like to second it? Will that, yeah councillor Harrison? Councillor Gomez, please speak, you've got three minutes, starting now.
Not much to say, Mayor, other than it's good work and governance is important to this council. I thank the work of the governance team to basically clarify some of the nitty, itty-bitty gritty kind of details around the way in which we manage the council, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harrison.
I'll just second that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the governance report? Councillor Wade?
Just very briefly to say, it's lovely to see that we're using more Wurundjeri Wurundjeri names in our place naming, we know that that's something that is important and valued, and I'm really pleased to see that we're doing it, and it'd be great to do some larger roads soon too.
Thank you councillor Wade. Anyone else? Okay, do you want to exercise your right of reply, councillor Gomez? No, I'll put that, all those in favour, please raise your hand, that's passed unanimously. We'll move on to 8.1 Notice of Motion Number 9, 2025, commemorating Hiroshima and Nagasaki.
I have an amendment.
And we've got an amendment, so it's moved by myself and councillor Harrison, the deputy mayor's got an amendment. Is it on the screen? It's, yeah, it does, it relates to some changes, word changes to point four, the final paragraph of the proposed notice of motion, you've all got that in front of you. I accept that amendment, do you accept that councillor Harrison? Yes, you do. So that's now incorporated governance officers into this substantive motion, and I will speak to this now. Pardon? But you can speak in it, definitely speak here. So this is something that, like, all the time I've been on the council, it's pretty non-controversial, that we, I mean, if you can't oppose nuclear warfare and nuclear bombs, well, it's a very bad starting point. So it's something that's united all factions, all parties, all individuals on this council from the minute I got on this council, and it's sort of like bog standard, every year we just, you know, we go through the motions almost, with all due respect. And the most exciting, the most, you know, the thing that we mainly talk about is horrific circumstances in Japan in 1945 and Hiroshima and Nagasaki. This year, it's a little bit different. This year, I mean, I know my daughter rang me up three weeks ago crying because she thought that the conflict between Israel and Iran was going to lead to nuclear war. Israel's obviously a nuclear power, and there was that whole stuff, I mean, you know this as well as I do, we've got one of the craziest regimes on the planet in North Korea with a nuclear bomb, and it's almost got lost in the wash. We almost came to a war between India and Pakistan only a few weeks ago, both of them are nuclear powers, and that's almost been forgotten about with all the drama in the Middle East. This is an extremely dangerous time in world history, it's not the most dangerous time in world history, but it's a very, very dangerous time, and the amount of young people that have spoken to me recently about their fear about nuclear war, including, as I say, my own family, it's actually been a real eye-opener. The most important part of this motion, though, relates to the bit that's been amended, and it's a good amendment from the deputy mayor, is to not only reaffirm our 2018 endorsement of the International Campaign to Abolish Nuclear Weapons Cities Appeal, but also to call on the federal government to do the right thing and to sign and ratify this without delay. I mean, I'm told, I don't know if I've got this right, maybe councillor, deputy mayor can educate me if I've got this wrong, but I think it is actually party policy, the ALP party policy to do this, but they actually, and I'm not trying to make a cheap dive because I think we're all agreed, it would be a really good thing if the prime minister knocked this up the priority list of the federal government a wee bit. And in our small way here at Yarra, that's what we're encouraging the federal government to do. Councillor Harrison?
Look, it's truly shocking that, as we say, we're 80 years on from the terrible tragedies that happened in Hiroshima and Nagasaki, and we're again looking at this possibility that nuclear weapons could be put to use in various locations around the world, so this is like a no-brainer for us to be supporting. So I don't have a lot more to say, but we just need to learn from the history, and I really hope that we, you know, that we can, the world can move on, but it is very sad that we're in the position we are right now.
Deputy Mayor Mackenzie?
Thank you very much for putting up this motion for us today. On August 6th, it will mark 80 years since the bombings, and these bombings killed more than 210,000 people. Sometimes when I hear numbers like that, it's really hard to comprehend them as individual human lives. I try to think about it as not 210,000 people, but one person 210,000 times. Actually, if we took 10 seconds for every one of them, we would be sitting here for 24 days. So on top of those bombings, there have been generations of survivors, some of who live in Australia, some of who live in our community, that are carrying the physical and psychological and social scars of nuclear warfare, and we honour them not just with reverence, but with action. Sadly, as my colleagues mentioned, this isn't just about history, around the world, the threat of nuclear weapons has again begun more visible through our rising geopolitical tensions, modernisation of nuclear arsenals, and a growing sense that the unthinkable is once again possible. In Australia, recent debates around nuclear-powered submarines and suggestions of nuclear domestic energy raise questions about the future that we want to build and the risks that we're willing to normalise. Yarra has long stood for peace and justice and stood strong on this issue in 2018, when Danny Bosler was the mayor, the council first passed this motion endorsing ICANN City Appeal. Then in 2020, Yarra submitted this motion, or a motion like this, to the Australian Local Government Association to do the same, and it was a riot that we joined with other cities across the world in supporting the UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We don't get to make foreign policy in this chamber, unfortunately, but we do get to say clearly and proudly that our community supports a world free from the catastrophic threat of nuclear weapons. And to the last point in this motion, and as the mayor brought up, ratifying this treaty is long overdue. Signing and ratifying it is something that the Labor Party has previously committed to at national conferences, three of them, it's in the ALP National Platform, and as we approach the 80-year anniversary of this event, I hope that movement on that will be swift. I commend this motion to the chamber.
Thank you. Any other councillor want to speak to this? Councillor Wade?
Yes, just briefly, I, this is the first time, it's been standing Yarra policy for the whole time that I've been on council, but it hasn't come before us because it was adopted, the term before last, and so I just am glad to have the opportunity to support it as well. I echo the deputy mayor's comments about one person 210,000 times, and I tend to think about things in City of Yarra's, and this is about two City of Yarra's, and that's a very scary, scary number. It's had a long history here, apparently, according to the website, we were about two months behind the City of Melbourne, who were the first city in Australia to sign, to sign up with ICANN, and yeah, and I proudly re-endorse it tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Ho?
So I very support this motion. It bring me the history of my own country in Vietnam, where it's repeating history like nuclear war and bombing country like in Southeast Asia by America is not acceptable. To me, it's, growing up in the 80s, always concerned and fear of World War III, or between the Cold War, Russia, USR and US, that we're going to live tomorrow if we're going to have a nuclear bomb, so very, very supportive, it's very emotional for me to get this happening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Anyone else like to speak? I won't exercise my right of reply, we'll just put this straight to the vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand, that has passed unanimously. Thank you all. Petitions and joint letters, do we have any petitions and joint letters? No. Questions without notice, do we have any, councillor Mackenzie, deputy mayor Mackenzie?
Thank you. So councillors, we're made aware via email from the Australian Services Union that this council won't be applying for the that this council won't be applying for the federal government's Early Childhood Education Worker Retention Grant and that that decision was made without meeting with the ASU, who is a major stakeholder. What are the reasons that council won't be applying for this and why have they chosen not to meet with the union?
Yeah, the CEO?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you councillor for the question. Actually, we'll decline to respond to that, though. As you know, I can confirm that we've made the decision not to apply for the grant. It was something that was very seriously thought about. It's a pretty limited opportunity and but beyond that, because of the provisions of the Local Government Act that are very clear about my responsibilities versus councils, I won't, I won't expand any further, it's operational, but the ASU are welcome to contact me.
Thank you. Any other questions without notice? No, we'll move on to any delegates' reports? No. Any general business? Councillor Wade?
Yes, I have an item of general business. It's a motion that council, that officers report back on the feasibility of council facilitating an e-bike library, similar to that in the City of Burundara, to the October ordinary council meeting.
I'll second that. Councillor Wade, would you like to speak to that? Yep.
Sure thing, thank you.
Your three minutes start as soon as you start talking.
Brilliant. So this Burundara program came to my attention very, very recently and when I kind of started putting feelers about if people were interested, Anne, who I have noticed is in this room, very far back there, hi Anne, said, "Why don't you ask for an officer's report?" And I thought, oh, what a good idea, I haven't put many of those up this term and I think this is a really interesting thing to learn more about. The idea of an e-bike library is to give people an opportunity to try something and see if it works for them. This is something we do through our library program with electric cooktops and other sustainability devices that are big expensive changes to make in your own life and that you really might want to try out before you but before you commit to a major extent, expense. These are people, things that people invest in and we know from our health and wellbeing plan, again tonight, it was a very useful document to have on the agenda, how extremely diverse the Yarra community is from a socio-economic perspective. And so people are really thinking through these decisions before they make them. I've also heard in the last kind of day or two, since I started looking into this, from people as far north as Faulkner, where there's a neighbourhood centre that runs an e-library program and apparently they have a two-month waiting list from an extremely diverse group of people who are interested in trying out one of these bikes. I think it's the sort of thing that you wouldn't buy, like, you know, if you're carrying a kid on the back unless you're really confident and that's the sort of thing that you want to be able to try out, you want to be able to try it out in your own life, see how it works before you do it. It's a gap that I think is a perfect gap for a public service to fill, whether that's the council or with one of our, you know, lovely neighbourhood houses locally, like a non-for-profit partner, to try to facilitate a program that lets people try these things because it's not profitable, it's not something that companies are going to do. And so it's a great place for us to step in and help people try out their options. We know that our library of things so far has been incredibly popular. I've been very non-prescriptive in the motion to allow officers complete flexibility to talk to people from other councils to see what's being done already. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, I think it's something that we could scope out what it looks like and see what else other people are doing. If there's exciting things happening to our east or to our north, why don't we learn from them? So it's just calling for a report and I'd, yeah, I'd really love to see what it could look like.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, want to second it? Yep?
Thanks, Mayor, sorry, I thought you were seconding, but that's.
I was, but, you know, I get fed up with the sound of my voice, so.
Thanks for sharing. I fully support councillor Wade's motion. And it's pretty hot off the press, the ink's probably still wet off the printer. But I do think it's a great, look, there's no harm in issuing a report and a feasibility study for something like this. I think it's great because it serves the working people who are really doing it tough right now about people on low incomes. That's, I think, where for me it really stands out as a great opportunity and for that reason I'd like to support it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? No, councillor Gomez? You can speak, whatever way you want to speak, it's a free country.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm voting against, well, I will be voting against this motion, I think we need to be careful what we, we're too cavalier in what we think council should or shouldn't do. I do have an e-bike, I value it. I think we have, we still operate, or we still permit the operation of the Lime e-bike service in Yarra. I'm nervous, despite councillor Wade's good efforts, that we're about to embark on yet another ill-considered exercise in thinking about what we should do, when I believe that if you're a competent e-bike retailer, you'd be offering many options to the market to test that out for people who could genuinely see whether a an e-bike that would support a family could be used as in lieu of a second car or other form of transport. So on that basis, while it's a good idea, I'm nervous if I council go beyond its traditional remit.
Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Mackenzie?
Thanks and thanks for putting this motion, councillor Wade, I will be supporting it. Look, we're just calling for a report here and we may well find in that report that all of these issues and I think reasonable things to be concerned about councillor Gomez are brought up. But it is just a report, doesn't even have a date on it, perhaps we might find something that is useful in City of Yarra. A lot of us do have e-bikes in our councillor support policy, we can use e-bikes that are provided by the council. And personally, that is how I get around this city when I'm doing council business. It's changed, it's one of the things that, you know, if I ever left council, it would be the first purchase I made. I don't mean to be all like crazy about it, but it's changed my life and the way that I move around. And if that's something, you know, if I think realistically, would I have spent five thousand dollars on a bicycle? Like, probably not, no, I wouldn't have done that, which would have meant that, sure, I have my push bike, but I'd be driving a lot more and I'm really bad at parallel parking, so all of your cars would suffer. So I'm into this, let's give it a go, we might find out, I really trust the frank and fearless advice we get from officers and we can take it from there.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Councillor Austin first and then councillor Harrison?
I won't be supporting this, partly for the reasons that councillor Gomez highlighted in terms of where is our remit as a council. But I think, for me, it's also this idea of it's just a report and that's true, it is just a report. But we are moving into a time of a heavy, heavy workload on the officers based on everything that we have signed up to in the council plan and the action plan. And every time we call for another report, that is resources that need to be redirected, time that needs to be redirected, brain power, all those other kinds of things towards an exploratory idea. And and I caution against this, and we've done it a lot in this council, actually, and we know that it pushes timeframes back, it causes delays, it causes consternation. And I think that for what might be a nice idea, I don't feel that there is a compelling business case behind this to redirect officer resources. I know a lot of other people around the table disagree and that is fine, that is democracy at work, but that is my view on this.
Thank you. Councillor Harrison, just before you jump in, are you for or against? Okay, well, I'll speak as I'm in for and then I'll let you go and then I'll go back to, if everyone has spoken, I think, obviously to yourself for right of reply. I want to speak in favour of this motion. First up, anytime, I've just had it as an absolute principle, when anytime anybody asks for a report, I just as a matter of principle, always support it. Councillor Landis often raises reports that I totally disagreed on a political basis, but on the basis of supporting the right of people to have that debate, we have to do it. And it's some, like, no disrespect, it's a little bit cheeky of the independent councillors to complain, councillor Aston to complain about, "Oh, too many reports", our very first action at this council was twenty-six reports in one motion in the omnibus bill. And now, like, so I think it's a little bit cheeky to say, "Oh, we can't be doing an extra report" when you and I voted for twenty-six of them in one motion in the November meeting. Anyway, coming back to the reason why I think this is a really good idea, and by the way, who would have believed that we've been copying Burundara? The comms told me today that we're going to change all our, the Yarra news to copy, in an amazing way they do it in Burundara, and the mayor over there is a good friend of mine, she's going to get her head bigger than anything because they see themselves as the poor cousins of Yarra, but maybe they're showing us the lead. But the thing is, is there's two Yarres, there's the Yarra of the people who live in the houses on Napier Street that live in Fitzroy and Clifton Hill and they live an amazing life and quality of life issues are what they mainly come to council about. And they make up eighty, eighty, almost ninety percent of the population, but there's another Yarra that lives in the public housing estate that don't have two cents to rub together. And especially when we know that Yarra, that the e-scooters may never come back, because we want them to come back, but they may never come back. And then the e-bikes make it all the more important. We consciously give quite a lot of money and support to our toy libraries because we know that in Yarra, lots and lots of families cannot afford toys. Can you imagine being that poor that you can't afford toys for your own children? And we, because we're a compassionate progressive council, we back in those NGOs to do that. This is doing the same thing. And it's all very well saying, "Oh, well, maybe the car dealers can", you know, that's just a dream world for people who live in the public housing estate here in Fitzroy or Collingwood or in North Richmond, that they can go and buy a car just because it's like affordable housing. It's slightly cheaper, but it's still out of, out of the target of the vast majority of people who are living on public housing estates. So I think if we could pull this off, and again, as the deputy mayor said, it's only a report, I think it would be really useful. If they came back and said, "Yes, we can do it and it costs next to nothing", I'm sure all of us would love it. If they come back and said, "Yes, we can do it, but it's quite pricey", well, then we can have that debate and let's have it in October. I just think, honestly, like, I just think it'd be very, very small-minded not to allow this report get through and let's have the debate properly in the month of October. Councillor Harrison's next.
Look, the first thing I'll state is that I've been on the libraries committee, the last meeting of that committee because the committee won't be, it's not continuing after the governance changes that were brought in at the last council meeting. But we, as that advisory committee, spent quite a long time discussing the library of things and e-bikes didn't come up as something that people were proposing. But, you know, what I would state, and I want to really reinforce what the other councillors, councillor Aston has said in relation to work for staff. Every one of us here tonight has acknowledged the huge body of work that council officers do every time that a report comes to council at our behest. And like, this is a situation, this particular motion here simply talks about e-bikes, there's broader questions about the library of things. So this seems to be, to be something that's really rushed forward to here and we're not looking at broader questions, but also the resourcing issues and that's why I can't support this tonight because we all know how much work is involved with every report that the officers prepare for us.
Thank you. Before I give councillor Wade the right of reply, did you, no one else wants to speak? Okay, councillor Wade? Two minutes, obviously.
Brilliant, thank you. So I was on the libraries advisory committee for four years and the library of things was something we talked about heavily in that time because that is when it was introduced and it was something that I think everybody saw as ranging in scope and subject to new ideas. And so that's, that's really what this is. I wanted to remind my colleagues, just, I appreciate some people were spoken against, but just in case you would consider changing a vote that a general business motion, which is what this is, is actually quite restricted in what officers can do. It wasn't something, it wasn't a notice of motion, this isn't an unlimited workload, it's something that officers have to be quite time-constrained in giving feedback on, so I really, I don't think it's as burdensome as maybe you think it is. I also have a lot of faith in our libraries team, they're a really excellent, excellent team, they do excellent work and have come up with a lot of innovative ways of doing things over the years. Our open libraries program is something that nobody else does and this is something that other people do do, so I'm sure they could learn from very quickly and have conversations with colleagues elsewhere. I will also say that I have really intentionally tried to give space over the last six months to new councillors and to staff. I appreciate there was a really heavy workload coming into this term. I intentionally pulled back and so I just, the comments around, you know, more work, more reports, like, I am one of nine councillors, I appreciate, I'm not in the majority on most things here, but I do, I was elected, I do represent people and this is, this is the first thing I've called on this, called for this term. Please do correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it is. I also wanted to reiterate what the deputy mayor said about councillors using e-bikes that the council have loaned to us. It really demoralizes me that we think that that's, that's good policy for us and it's not for our community members. It's, it's about giving people the capacity to try things and I know that, I think many or most of us are using those at the moment and so I think that's something that we should at least look at to see if it's viable for our community members. Councillor Gomez, you said something earlier that really struck me, which was, "We're here to help" and I think this is such a great way that we could explore helping our community.
Thank you. I'll put that motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Davies, Ho, Mackenzie, Jolly, Wade, those against, councillor Gomez, Harrison, Aston, that motion is carried. We'll move on now to, there's no urgent business as far as I'm aware. So I'm going to ask for a motion that the meeting be closed to members of the public in accordance with section sixty-two, two A of the Local Government Act two thousand and twenty to allow consideration of confidential information. I've got councillor Wade, councillor Gomez, all those in favour, that's passed unanimously. So we're going to go into confidential now, so maybe we'll just give everybody a couple of minutes just to thank you all for coming and we'll see you, I think next month is back at Richmond, back at Richmond, yeah, thank you.